The United States, America, continue to recover and one nation for the power in this law.
Angie, would you call the roll please?
Here.
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 Okay, our first order of business is the adoption of the meeting minutes from the March first meeting. By resolution, do we have a motion? Okay, John seconds, all in favor, opposed, carried. First case PLZBA twenty twenty three zero zero one two seven sixty nine to seven seventy one River Street. An urban neighborhood residential requires an area variance. The applicant Neo Pearl Architecture P L L C on behalf of the owner Joe Johnson is proposing a renovation of a double wide townhouse into six units. The building currently has five residential units and one commercial space. The applicant is requesting to convert the commercial space into one residential unit. Variance is requested on minimum lot area and minimum lot width, maximum density and parking spaces. Mr. Presley here? You have Mr. Brown? Okay.
On the bottom.
Hello.
Hi.
Representing Mr. Pollard.
And you?
Rob. Harrison.
Harrison, okay.
So you summarized it pretty well. Pretty basic proposal. One of the relevant parts is the density variance. But it's a building with quite a bit of area in it. So makes sense to put that many units in. That's about it.
So now. System rear windows are already in and I saw the electrician going in the gray. I take that this is going forward without munitions, so to speak. I know, I mean, it's not empty, right? Let's not pretend that you're not working on it.
So it's an existing, has been used in the past. I can't like verify like your question about if it's going forward. I don't know unless Neil knows, but. It's not. It's not being worked on. Okay, early.
So at one point there was a commercial space. It's not the way we did. Question to the commercial space. Instead of running with commercial space, they get a number of prime.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so. Questions for the advocate?
With the commercial space as a.
No, our client just wants six residential units, one per floor. So that's the plan. That's our proposal.
Now, this might be a foolish question because I haven't really thought it through, but. Is the. Big lot areas and what's required for a commercial as opposed to a residential? Because we're six fats there, it's just that one was a commercial. Is that a stupid question I'm asking?
It's not a stupid question. I think I understand what you're saying, but I don't actually know the answer to that. I don't know if Angela knows the answer to that, but it's also possible that this was a preexisting, nonconforming parcel. And since they're proposing a different use, then they would have to see the variances. They're not add, they're not like building on it.
Right, exactly. Like, you know, from that perspective, I mean, we don't have to like, you know, under this for an hour and a half. It's, it's the same footprint. We're not doing anything else with it, but just changing it from maybe a mom and pop store or something to. Yeah, okay, so. Is there anybody who can speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, so. Do we have any further questions from the board? As I said, you just, you know. It's not a big deal. You come in, so. To discuss, do we have, do we need to do a secret? Okay, go ahead.
For PLZBA twenty twenty three zero zero twelve, I'd ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient informational, information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? John seconds on the motion, all in favor, opposed, carried. And on the application, do you have a motion on the application? Okay.
Going to make a motion that we approve the area variance. This is based on the information that was in the application. They presented here tonight regarding the first, the lot area, the lot width. The lot can't be changed, the lot is laid out as is. It's an existing structure that's been on the lot. You can hold that the density would be calculated the same whether it were used as a commercial space or as a residential space. And there's no means to provide pardon on the lot, given the nature of the neighborhood. That's urban neighborhood, part one is an area. So for all these reasons, my motion is to approve the.
Oh, second, okay, thirty seconds and on the motion, Jack McCann. Kathy Conley, I vote yes to approve. Kevin McLeod.
I vote yes to approve.
January. Okay, there you go. I can go back to working on the windows.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Next case. Twenty twenty four zero zero thirteen, seven sixty one, seven sixty three, third Avenue. Two family residential, uh, zero unit, and looking for a special use in area variance. The applicant, Neo Pearl Architecture P L L C, got quite a business. On behalf of the owner Joe Johnson is proposing to convert this building into a church, requiring a special use permit. The applicant is proposing to use the other half of the building to create two dwelling units. Since requested on the first special use, modern area, maximum density and parking. And once again, I also said that the church center, which is already outside, so the people on the.
I'm here to represent Joe Johnson, the owner of the building. What seems to have happened is the owner purchased the property. It used to be a VFW community building. And if you see the building, it's obviously not a house. And leased it to a congregation without seeking the special use permit, which is what we're here to clean that up tonight. So yes, it is being used. They're required to have a special use permit, whether that goes with. I would presume that once you change the tenant, you got to come back for a brand new special use permit, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Would you, do you know what we had the building? As in, would you think it was probably a church a zillion years ago?
I just, given the shape. That's, that is my.
It was a purple fight. Before that, it was a polling place, and before that, it was a zillion things. But I'm just saying by the shape of the building, I'm assuming that it used to be a church sometime ago. I don't remember when, but. So you need a special use in order to have the church in there. And how are, can you tell us something about the, you know, they're going to operate the hours?
So from the owners, or not from the owners, but from the congregation. We've got Wednesday evening, seven to nine P M. Friday evening, seven to nine P M. Sundays, eleven to one thirty. And they typically expect around forty five people, maybe fifteen cars for the duration of those services. Oh, I'm sorry, the forty five is for Sunday and twenty five is, there's the two evening ones during the week is twenty five people.
And then in the back? It's going to be the two apart, two apartments?
Yeah, the, the idea was to, since it's a two family district and the congregation doesn't need all that space is to limit amount of space needed for a special use permit. So it's trying to use the remainder of the building and the use that's already permitted, I write.
So does the renovation need to take place on just the residential units? Or is the whole space going to be renovated?
That's a great question, but the work would be, need to be done to create. There are not two residential units. Right now, it's a giant, giant, the whole thing is a community building. So the thought is, since that's not leasing, that amount of space generally is not leasing. Put some essential units in, cut down the amount of space that requires a special use permit. That's the way they're approaching it.
And then it would only be used as a church on those times you told us.
That's what I've been told.
So you don't know if there's any like events on, at other times, like on the Saturday afternoon or, you know?
I'm, I'm just relaying the information that was given to me.
We didn't get that far yet. We go. Anybody else from the board have anything they want to ask?
I would like to follow up on what Katie said.
You want, speaking to your microphone, please.
Are you having weddings on Saturday or we don't know? You don't know, right?
Did you say weddings?
Wedding or something like that.
Things to do in the church.
My, my understanding is that that's not what they're doing, but I think there might be somebody here who could talk about that. Just the information I provided is what I was given to relay.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
Okay. Okay, so somebody else from the, I, it's the pastor. Okay, do you want to come up and speak to the roof of the building?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Hello.
Okay, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Pastor Danny Campos.
Okay.
I'm the pastor of the church, God is power and glory, located in six, seven, six, one, third Ave, Troy. Um, yes, um. I don't know.
The question was, are you just going to be open on the Wednesday and the Friday? As Chris Brown said, and Sundays, and you're not ready to have, you know, as Katie said, birthday parties or whatever on a Saturday afternoon or weddings? Well, anything like that, or you are, or what?
Yeah, like, I mean, like a regular church, somebody from the public or for the church, want to get, want to get married.
Sure.
Obviously, that's part of the.
Not, not on a like a day and base.
Right, just exactly.
He was saying, birthday for a wedding, but not for the main. Wednesdays, Fridays and then.
Correct, right, okay, just every now and then, right here. Like, wedding reception and.
No, no, pretty much all the weddings are, I mean, daytime.
Right, correct. Okay, she has anything else she wanted to add for the church? Now, you're, you're, so Mr. Johnson owns the building, so you must be running from him for the church, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so as far as, we had any questions about the apartments, that's not you.
No.
You're just the church.
Yes, church, yeah.
Got it, okay. So do we have any more questions about the church?
You have bells, church bells?
Questions? Um, no, not really, no. I got officers always in the door. They.
No, bells, like the bells are ringing.
Bells, like ringing bells.
Oh, no, no. No, 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 not that one.
Okay.
All right, is that, is just the place it was used like a church before because they have the plate in the wall?
Yeah, sure, well, I mean, it looks like a church.
So.
Yeah, okay, you're not related to the one down on Sixth Avenue, are you? Because it looks like it's the same sign to me. I mean, right by Catholic Avenue, one hundred and seventeen street. No, no, it's not like you're moving up there.
No, no.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I don't even know him, but.
Yeah, okay, it's just like, I think it kept kind of like the same exact sign.
Pretty much, but many of them.
Okay, do we have anybody else to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay, Stephen, go ahead, introduce yourself.
So I'm Stephen Figueroa, I'm actually the city council, represent District Two. Um, I know Danny Campos for many years, he actually a homeowner. And, you know, few years, uh, years, probably since I was young, but needless to say that he was, uh, he was, he did have a church in Falese, and it was very far for the, for the members in Troy. So he's dedicated to the community, he's dedicated to giving, get back to the community. And that location will be a lot more easier for the members to contribute as a church. So I just wanted to give my full support and anything I can do to support it, to move forward with this. Oh, you know where to contact me.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? I kind of knew that. Oh, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. Did you want to speak, Mr. Johnson? No? Okay, come ahead.
My name?
Yes, go ahead, you have to give your name, please.
My name is Ellen Harris. I have been in contact with the city planning, the board, commissioner, Carmella. Everyone has an email of pictures, activities that have been happening at the so-called church. Um, back in, um, he purchased it in April, May. They've been doing work inside. Um, they did put walls up, painted it, looks beautiful inside, have nothing against the pastor whatsoever. Um, the problem we're all having is the neighborhood, and we have someone on video. They're parking in people's driveways. They're also, um, I have, I don't have the, um, the city does, has a picture of someone like a kid in their car. And if I just got out of the hospital one night, when it was open before you guys closed it, and my daughter put a chair up and one of their followers ran over my chair as I was getting out of the car. And he looked and he goes, I don't see your sign, your name on the pole. And just went into the church. When I spoke to Mr. Johnson, his exact words, I mean, I wrote a whole page. Um, he said, tell the neighbors to deal with it or I'll put.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Johnson, hang on, hang on.
Five unit apartment up there. So when I see the proposal, I said it to all the neighbors, and he's putting two units. There's no parking as it is on that street. They take up the side street from one hundred and twenty first from second to fourth, and then they start coming north and south with the cars. So there's older people, I'm sixty two, but you have seventies and eighties that want to get into their houses. One person just bought a house and is getting parking tickets because they're too close to the fire hydrant when he gets home from work. It's the parking, he should provide parking for this. And he was, I even suggested buying a lot next to it and making parking for there. But they've been using her driveway, thinking because it was closer to the church, it was the church. So there is an issue, and they do stay open on Fridays, which she will attest to at midnight with pianos and drops.
Okay, well, then let's hear what she has to say. Um, so, one second, ma'am. Yeah, I was going to ask you, I'm sorry, I got distracted, your address, please. Seven sixty seven.
Sixty seven.
Yep.
Third Ave.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Now, okay, now, you have to hand up, which I don't see a name there, but it's too far away for me to read, Angela.
Yeah, my name is Angela Molesky. I live right next door. Um, I actually, um, I don't have as, uh, an issue with the noise. Um, I mean, occasionally on Fridays, they do stay a bit. I, I've, I've never experienced till midnight or maybe once till midnight. I think they stayed open till midnight on New Year's Day, on New Year's Eve. Um, they had a party on New Year's Eve, which is okay. Um, so I don't have a noise complaint. Um, I, I don't want them parking in my driveway or in front of my driveway. I mean, like, that's it, that's my, that's my only concern.
Okay, that's a good concern. I mean, first of all, you can't park in front of somebody's driveway, that's totally against the rules. Second of all, let me just ask you this. Now, I walked by their lot and I noticed the other day that there were, that's your parking lot, your driveway between your house and this building. That belongs to you, not to the church.
Yes.
Okay, so, right, so you have three cars parked, I've noticed three cars parked in the driveway.
Yeah, three adults live in my house.
And that's all you. And that's all your house.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, thank you, and what did you finish your last name?
Um, it's Molesky, M A L. Uh, seven sixty five, third Ave.
Seven sixty five, so then Ms. Harris would be next to you growing up.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we, we've had nothing but lovely interactions with the parish. I just wanted to make sure that's clear. I, I really like the pastor and I, I, I really like the church.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's just speak, we're taking, we're doing opposition now, I guess. So are you against back there or are you for? Um, I'm, did we have the inauguration here?
I, I would like to, if you're asking me, I want neutral.
What?
I'm more neutral, I'm not a for or against.
Neutral, I'm sorry, I thought you said I want, okay, you are neutral, okay. All right. Now, what about, we're here from, uh, you're for, let's hear it from Mr. Johnson, so. Mr. Johnson, can we do that?
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
How are you guys?
All right, but don't try and butter this up, just move ahead.
Um, yeah, so I, um, I don't want to go back and forth, obviously, with Ellen. Um, we are on board with doing what the community needs us to do. I never would say those words to neighbors or whatever, you know, to debunk that. Um, I am a Troy resident, I have a lot of properties in the city of Troy. I'm a landlord in Troy, I don't try to tell people to go and just deal with it, that's not my mentality. Uh, like I said, we bought the building, um, it has church, it has a marble in, inlay that actually is dated on it, that it was a church prior to wherever it transpired to today, but actually, it's been a church for a long time. Um, I'd like to thank Ms. Molesky for coming on today, being a neighbor, literally right next door. Um, I understand there may be some problems with the driveway. Obviously, Pastor Danny's there, uh, he can handle those parking nuances with the neighbor that's literally right next door. Um, she doesn't seem to be too opposed to the noise. Um, and I think it's a good fit for the community. I would never do anything to damage Lantingburg and the community that I live in. I also coach youth sports in and stuff like that. So I wouldn't do anything that was malicious to this community because, you know, obviously, I live here. I don't want that kind of thing in and around.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, now who, that, did you people want to speak or you just want to raise your hands that you're in favor of the church? You don't have to speak. But if you want to speak, you're welcome to come forward.
Oh, yeah, sure.
How you doing? My name is Albert Cor. C O R A.
And, okay, and you, all right, go ahead.
I'm a member of the church.
Okay.
Um. About the parking, um, next, next door. What I do, because I'm the bus, I drive the bus for the church. I drop off the people there. Now I see that it's a problem, I won't do that again, you know, because where I drop them off, but we never leave the bus there, you know.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can drop them off. I mean, there's no big deal, you strap them around.
I just wanted to just make that clear, you know, um, we never parked, I never parked there. And there's other church parked there, but you know, we can see it, so.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Rodriguez.
I know you, don't I? Yeah, you look familiar to me, all right, go ahead.
Um, well, I'm a, how you calling, I'm a member of the church, but I'm also a. Uh, pastor assistant and, um, no, but I'm also check, I'm. Deacon. And I'm always, I'm always, um, go late, I'm always go late to the church. And, um, when I get there, I make sure, because I, I live in, I got a drive through too. So I always make sure that nobody parked there. And it's true what Albert Cora says, he parked there to drop the.
No, that's fine, that's, that's, thank you.
We never, because I'm there too, we never stay till one o'clock. If we stay there till one o'clock, it's cleaning for the, you know, for Sunday, you know, and that's on Fridays. Um, and if we stay there, it's praying, and it's only till twelve o'clock, and it's only three, four, five ladies, sisters. And we don't make no noise and nothing.
To get one o'clock in the morning, you know, really?
Yeah.
Even though that you.
I just want to make sure that it's there, one. And I always make sure that everything is okay. Plus, it's a building they fixed in, in this time, looking to the front of the building, it's a building here that they fixed.
Right, yeah.
We always try to park here because it's not, nobody's parking there. So we try that, and sometimes they park over here, but I don't think we bother nobody.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Because they come near to the church and they know the rules.
First of all, anybody who has a. Okay, but you don't have his driver's license, come ahead, because Jack has a question for you, but I just want to make the point, anybody who has his driver's license knows you don't park in front of the driveway. Church or, you know, Chicago, you don't park in front of the driveway.
Yep.
Okay, Janet, give me a question.
Uh, pastor.
Are you with me?
Congregation.
Say it again?
Around forty five, Sundays.
It said forty five and twenty five during the week.
And during the week, yeah, come, plenty, twenty five, maybe thirty, it says, people work.
People that are involved in your congregation, teenagers, a little older.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Looking for a solution to this. The parking is the biggest issue that I can see. So. I have seen churches in this city for years, they would have their ushers come out and literally park cars where they're not going to bother neighbors. Is that a possibility for you to get maybe some of your younger folks to go out and alleviate the parking problem?
Of course, yeah, I, I have, we have like five deacons, I can send one or two to that job.
Okay.
And I also, I'm going to active, I'm going to be taking care of that personal. Because I, I talk with the church and I always tell them, try to park here, try to not park in the, in the people, but some days, sometimes.
We don't want to, we don't want to block.
It's that, I live here and I know, I know the Philly.
You know, parking in the burbs can be rough.
Okay, but you can back over the side street towards Fourth and Fifth Avenue, the CEO building, there isn't anybody around here, maybe at night or on Sundays.
That's correct.
Over that way, so. Over that way, so walking up a block after you get out to go pray, you know what I mean?
That's correct.
You can do that, you don't have to park just right outside the door.
Uh, would that satisfy, uh, Ms. Moleski? Would you?
No, she's satisfied, she's neutral. It's Mrs. Harris we have to worry about. I bet you, but I'm sorry to have to say this, and I don't wanna get into it because, uh, you know, this isn't the place for it, but cones are not legal. I mean, it's a nice thing to do, it's like putting a chair out. You can't do it. They had been passed a law some years ago. Everybody's city street is a city street and you can't save your own parking space. Much as I agree with you, but you have the right to stand on it. Okay, let's I, that, that's what I'm just saying, you can't put a cone up. According to the law, you cannot put a cone up, so therefore they don't have any they can call the police and the police will say, that's a right.
You know.
Alright, alright, we're getting a little out of control. Right, he's gonna make the adjustments and, you know, I can say one of these people can go park by the CEO building or right on that side by where they'll park. Playground, there's nobody there. Except during the day, so that's, you know. Alright, so anyway, do you have anything else we wanna discuss as far as this is concerned? What is it?
Hang on one second.
Well, how did that happen?
Why is this all wrong?
She asked about that and she was kind of
Alright, so where are we at?
So it's a seat, it's a parking space for three seats.
Okay, but this church is all over Lansingburg that don't have parking.
Right, but, but if we're gonna grant something to it, it's gotta be a grant.
Well, but, but we can't grant, we can only grant what, what's written here. If, if this is written incorrectly, then we shouldn't be granting anything. Not to mention principal uses. We have questions about this, um, internal questions, so to speak, that's what's So. So what happens in the meantime then, they can't?
Yeah.
It's already, I think it's
They were stopped. Yeah. So, a couple of
Okay, here we go, we got the, we're getting a resolution to this question.
Couple of questions have come to light during this process.
Um, she can't, they can't hear this in the back.
Oh, okay, a couple of questions have come to light during this process. Um, and it, it's, it's not any reflection of you or your church. It's, it's the process. Um, and that is, there's a question as to whether or not two parking space variance is, um, the correct variance for this location. Um, because there's no record of a larger variance ever being granted at that spot for a community center, and in that case, we would need to grant more parking. And the two-spot variance wouldn't cover the parking. The other issue is that we're talking now about two principal uses in one building. And there is a question as to whether or not that's allowed in this zone, um, in an R-two. I don't believe it is. Um, and so it's, again, it's not a reflection on you, but it's something that we need to figure out before we can go forward with a motion. Does that make sense? And I don't, I don't know if Mr. Johnson is, um.
Do you, do you wanna get that, Mr. Johnson?
I understand that, um, yeah, I guess part of the second, uh, going to the two units was to um, kinda just cut back on the, um, growing of the church and, uh, the commercial aspect, was we can control the cars, um, that would be in the units. Um, I guess my main focus would be to allow Danny, who's already been stopped for about a month, uh, to continue his services, um, you know, because like, it, I don't, the VFW was there all these years. I understand there's no records for that, but obviously everybody knows what it wa, I, I just, I, I, I just feel bad for these people, like, they wanna worship. They wanna do what they need, you know, and they're, and we didn't realize there was a problem. We, we addressed it as soon as we knew there was. Um, they're willing to do whatever the community wants to do. They just wanna go in their, in their doors and be able to worship. And, and I don't know how we find that tonight, um, but that's what I would just ask for, we can to, you know, look back on the other two apartments and, and, and drop them off for now. Um, I'll leave the space vacant. There's no work being performed on the building.
Okay. Okay, so that, how, Ollie, what do you think?
With respect to the issue of the two principal uses, if they, um, amended the application to take off the two dwelling units at this point in time, then you could proceed with the application for the special use permit.
Okay.
Um, and there wouldn't be the issue of two principal uses, and then you can deal with however you wanna deal with that at some point in the future. The parking, the parking number is still an issue. Uh, the way that, I did put the zoning code, the way it reads, I think what was put here was the two spaces, one for each dwelling unit.
Right.
But for whatever reason, it didn't include the number of parking spaces requested for the church. And per the code, the church would require one parking space per three chairs.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so obviously that number would be fifteen, if you have forty-five congregants. Right, that's what I was gonna suggest too, is if we were gonna use the forty-five number, it would actually be fifteen parking spaces that the um, that would be
So zero are proposed, so we needed variance for fifteen spaces.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so everybody wants to do that?
Um, not all the forty-five people have cars. We got a bus.
Yeah, but we gotta go down, every three chairs gets, um, every three chairs gets a spot.
So is, are you agreeable to that, Mr. Johnson? Because if we were to, um, make a motion tonight to approve that, then for right now, the principal use would be the church, and then you can move forward with the rest of it after the research has been done.
Yes, I agree to, to whatever would get Danny to be back in board with, uh, his people and, and doing the worship there. Um, I was, I was more than be happy to go that route if that's a possibility.
And so then we just need a variance for the fifteen spaces.
In addition to the minimum one.
In spaces went to fifteen.
Now may be a good opportunity for me to kind of pipe in on the special use permit criteria. Um, what this board is considering is whether the proposed use would be detrimental to public and press property or improvements. Whether the proposed use would be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. If the proposed use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and general plan for the community, and whether the proposed use is consistent with zoning laws. Um, and I'd also just note that a special use permit is a little bit different than an area variance, and that this board can also set conditions on a special use permit that would alleviate any concerns if there are particular conditions within reason that relates to the use of the property.
Okay, thank you very much. So, as a board, are we comfortable with going ahead with this? Black.
The lot area, well, the density, I guess, is what I'm wondering. Is that gonna change because of this, taking the apartments out?
Yeah, it's probably.
It would be smaller.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be even with We're not talking about units at this point, so I think it would eliminate it. I think the reason that that's there is because of the dwelling. Right, okay. Alright. And the lot area is a lot area, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, are we ready to do a secret then?
Uh, Madam Chair for PLZBA twenty twenty-three, oh, zero, zero, thirteen. Um, I'd recommend the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available on which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do it one second. Hey, Jack, and on the motion, all in favor? They opposed?
Um, I would suggest handling the special use permit motion separate from the area variances, since there's different criteria.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could do a motion first for the special use permit and then for the variances after that.
Okay.
Okay.
Katie, are you gonna do it? Since you're saying, okay.
Sure, I'll do it. Um, Madam Chair for PLZBA twenty twenty-three, zero, zero, thirteen. Um, I make a positive motion to approve the special use permit um, for the property at seven sixty-one third Ave to operate as a church. Um. I don't believe the use of a church is a detriment to the neighborhood. Um, I don't believe it would, um, go against our um. Our, uh, city plan. Um, and I don't believe the character of the neighborhood, um, would, um. And it does not, um. It doesn't go against, it's not a use that goes against our zoning plan, um, in my in my mind, um, now. We've already heard from Pastor, um, Campos that the parking issues will be, um, addressed with the congregants. Um, and that would be probably the one, um, stipulation that I would add, that somehow that parking, um, does not we don't want our neighbor, the neighbors to feel like it's a detriment to the neighborhood. We wanna make sure that the, the parking does not, um, make it, you know, a, a negative effect on them. Um, so I guess that would be the only stipulation. Okay, the positive motion to
Okay, do you have a second? Jack McCann, second on the motion, John Romaral. Jack McCann.
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes. Kevin McLaren.
Yes.
Okay, so you have the special use permit and you spaces, correct? Okay.
So I would also move that on ZBA twenty twenty-three, zero, zero, thirteen. Um, the area variance for the, um, lot area, um, which out of seven thousand, I don't think, uh, one thousand is, um, substantial. Um, and again, I don't believe, um, that this project is going to be a detriment to the neighborhood or go against our, um, you know, our, our zoning. Um, also for the parking spaces, which now would be fifteen required. Um. Because, um, the pastor has agreed to address the, the parking issues, um, and because they are finding places now, um. I, I am comfortable making the positive motion.
We have a second, Jack McCann on the motion, John Romaral. Jack McCann. Kathy Conroy, yes, to approve, Pauline McLaren.
Yes.
Okay, so there you go. You got your church for the time being. And if there's anything else, we'll do without a later date. Okay, you're welcome. Good luck. Next case, PLZBA twenty twenty-three, zero, zero, two, zero, two forty-nine Third Street, urban neighborhood residential. Don't take the chat outside.
I'm here on the Zoom. I don't know if you can hear me.
What, if you can hear me, do you mind stating your name and your address, please?
Sure, uh, my name is John Halloran. Um, I, uh, live, uh, in Palinville, which is about forty-five minutes south of Troy. I did, um, my wife and I bought the property at two forty-nine third back in October. Um, I'm a, you know, I originally grew up in Troy. Um, I still have family and friends there, so I'm there frequently. After a number of years of pestering my wife, she agreed to invest in some real estate with me there. And the, uh, proposal that we have on, uh, for tonight is to convert that property um, back to its original configuration, which would be two approximately one thousand square foot apartments in the main structure, and then there's already, um, a smaller apartment above the carriage house, uh, which, um, I believe is currently zoned as a unit, and we would propose to keep it that way.
Right, so you're just gonna, in the building, in the main building, the front building, whatever you wanna say, you're gonna leave it with two.
Right.
And then you're just gonna, you're not gonna try and put a third one into that building, you're gonna put the third one upstairs over the carriage house.
The third one already exists.
Yeah, right, right, but I mean, that's what the program is, not
So, that's right.
Yeah, okay. So in many ways, this is just like, um, same thing. It's not like you're taking, you know, the rest and would like for somebody to take a two in a building and give him a couple of feet of weight, but that's
My, my understanding of the history is that a prior owner had, you know, rezoned it to be one unit in the main building and never completed the work. So it was, when I investigated as part of purchasing it, it was listed with zoning as two plus units. Um, so we're, again, we're just proposing to bring it back to what the original configuration was.
Right.
The plans that I submitted, they're sent over to Angie, are, you know, they're not approved, but they should give you a good sense of what's going on. It's very straightforward, two flats, nothing out of the ordinary, completely consistent with what the, what exists in the neighborhood.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? John?
Mentioned the carriage house, is there any opportunity to convert the first floor into parking?
So there is room in I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last.
Into the park, uh, he asked if the carriage house on the first floor, there could be some parking there.
So the, the carriage house, as it exists, will accommodate one, uh, one parking spot. And like, over the long term, I would expect it gets used that way. But I think that, given the, you know, the timeline of the project, there'll be a time when there are no, there's no off-street parking at all. But at some point, when all the work is complete, I would expect that there, that, that could be used as a, as a single um, off-street parking spot is
You better off getting advantage for the three now, cause you might have
I, I would like to be able to, you know, rent the two units, um, you know, prior to completing that work in the carriage house. So yes, I would like to get the variance for the three spots.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Well, there's no one here to say something? Okay. Can you speak in favor or in oppositions? So that being the case, will there be any other questions from the board? So, um, Sikla?
Madam Chair for PLZBA twenty twenty-three, zero, zero, twenty. Um, I'd recommend the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available of how much to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do you have a second? John Romano, in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Kelly, you have a motion on the application.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay.
PLZBA two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, zero. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the area variance for the minimum lot width, maximum density and relief of the required free parking spaces. Regarding a lot with and, uh, a lot was laid out um, years and years ago. There's, there's really no way to change the width. Uh, the density is a relief of only three out of forty-three units per acre. That, that's a, a minimum amount of relief of the parking spaces. It sounds like the applicant is gonna make good faith effort to relieve that was part of that. And otherwise, this is, again, an area of the city where there's there's no opportunity for, or not much opportunity for off-street parking. No one is guaranteed for parking their units. So, for those reasons, um, I don't see how the benefit can be achieved by other units. I don't see that an undesirable change is gonna be made in the neighborhood. This use is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood as it is. I've already covered that the request is not substantial. The request will not have any adverse physical laws or environmental effects. For all those reasons, we're both in for tonight's application. Recommend you to
Okay, do we have a second? Jack McCann, seconds. On the motion, Katie McLaren.
Oh, yes, poo-poo.
Kathy Conroy, yes. Jack McCann.
Yes, poo-poo.
And John Normile. Okay, so there we go. Good luck, Mr. Halloran.
Thank you very much for your tough
Okay. Katie, second.
Same back at you.